Call this August 13th, 2013 work session to order. Daniel, what do you call the roll, please?
Rebecca Chase-Williams, District 1.
Present.
Jim Iyer, District 2.
Here.
Bates-Madison, District 3.
Here.
Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Mayor Davis, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make two quick little announcements, and then I'll make them again at the regular council meeting. Asking you to keep in your prayers our city clerk, Susan Hyatt. She is, is she out of the hospital yet? Is she still there? Still there. She's quite ill. Yeah. So, is she receiving visitors? Do we know that yet?
We're waiting on that answer to that question. We've sent a question out.
And also I'd like to just mention that our prayers, I know I speak for the council, are with the family of the young lady who was killed on Peachtree Industrial on Saturday night, Sunday morning. I knew Sarah. She was an assistant manager and bartender at Baton Ball over at Ashford Dumbly. So, we'd like to express our condolences and our prayers with her family and the staff at Baton Ball. Okay, we'll go over our agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If you'd pull your microphones forward, it'll...
This will be for... Hello? Why now?
Before I forget also, also to the condolences to DeKalb County Police and the family of the DeKalb County officer, I don't know his name, that was killed over the weekend as well.
Moving to the actual council meeting agenda, we'll start with that first. Thank you. Okay, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. Many of them are the IGAs. I'm happy to report that we did learn today that DeKalb County did pass on the police and parks intergovernmental agreement, and that while it's listed on your agenda as two separate items, it is a joint agreement now. So, it is one agreement containing both parks for parks and recreation, and that is at $3.2 million. That's covering items number one and two. And then number three is the intergovernmental agreement concerning the Georgia Crime Information Center, GCIC. And then the next IGA is the agreement between the city and Georgia Department of Transportation, and this is for the pedestrian streetscape and lighting maintenance along Beaufort Highway with the improvements that they're making there. Next item is the Tyler Financial Software Agreement. We had talked with you all about that in a previous work session. This is the contract that our finance department will be using. Bonnie reviewed all of that. Our city attorney has reviewed the agreement, and it's ready for signature. And then items six and seven, and then moving on to eight, nine, and 10 are minutes of previous meetings from July 22, July 23, both work sessions and special call meeting and city council meeting.
On that, on the, I think it's July 22nd, regular meeting, I had emailed, not knowing she was out of the office, I'd emailed Susan some comments or revisions earlier today. I've got a copy.
Okay, can I just take that from you?
Yeah, I'd just like to insert that and have those changes made. No need to pull it off the consent. I just want to...
Well, when it comes to that matter of the consent, you could just make comment that there are some corrections that need to be added, and then you'll present them to the deputy clerk.
Marie, I have a question about the, it might be for the chief to answer, but about the Dorville GCIC, that doesn't include the ability to issue warrants that sometimes officers have to go, I know that I've spoken with some of them, they've said they've had to go to DeKalb County to have a judge sign a warrant, and, you know, but this doesn't include that.
The GCIC is just entering information and receiving information under the state.
Is that issue about having to sign, having a judge sign a warrant, is that, do you see that as a problem for our department, having to take the time to go over there to get a warrant and then come back?
It's a problem, but that's what's been going on, so until they change the policy and procedures, I've been kind of stuck with it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Chief, I just had a question about this. Why are we doing this with Dorville as opposed to DeKalb County?
Or Shandley. Shandley, you've got one too.
We actually approached Shandley and Dorville. Either of them was easy to work with. Dorville already had one set up, and they were doing it for Sandy Springs prior, so it was just easier to do with them. The main reason we're doing it is if we didn't have something like that in place, we'd have to hire five people to monitor that computer 24 hours a day, and it's just cost savings for the city.
Okay, and you're happy with this rate that we agreed to with them?
Yes, it's fairly reasonable.
Okay.
Chief, you made the comment that until they change it, it is what it is, how you have to do the warrants. If they made a change, what is the change you'd like to see?
Well, we're, actually, we're trying to, we actually went to Dunwoody last week, just implemented finally, it's basically getting the warrant done over the computer. So, we're trying to get that set up with the judge. Chief Grogan and Dunwoody's been trying to work on this for the past two years.
What judge is that? You're talking, is that a DeKalb Superior State, Bill, do you know if it has to be a, we can't empower one of our judges to do warrants, it has to be a DeKalb State Superior Judge?
No, our judges can do warrants for us, search warrants, oral arrest warrants. It's just a process of logging them in here and then bringing them back through here. DeKalb County has a system, I believe, with the magistrate, so I'll do the warrants over there, and they run a warrant system through there, and they have a process by which, they give the warrant, they go do the arrest, they book them in, the police go back and pick them up over to jail, they bring them to magistrate the next morning, they have their first appearance hearing. It is, it is a process that they use. If, if in fact we started doing warrants through our judges, they would have to be returned over here, there would still be, the transportation issues would be really fairly horrific, because we would have to book them, we'd have to book them down at Memorial, and then we'd have to, we'd have to have a session up here that we don't usually have sessions within the timeframes that are required for the first appearance, and then we would have to take them back down there again. So, I don't think there's a savings at this point. What the chief's talking about is that electronic warrant system like they have in Cobb County that they're trying to institute. In Cobb County, any of the jurisdictions can go to a magistrate day or night, that's housed up in the courthouse in Cobb County, and go electronically online, get their warrants, sign electronically. So, if you're out in Powder Springs, you get online, and you're in the courthouse without traveling, and you can get them. I think that's exactly what the chief and Chief Grogan are trying to get set up over here in DeKalb.
So, that's, we could have a terminal in Brookhaven as well?
Right.
Doesn't sound very encouraging, though, that this is going to happen in the near future.
The electronic warrants, I think, might happen. Chief Grogan's been working on it for two years, and I think it's finally coming to fruition. They were actually trying to test them last week. I don't know if it was working or not yet.
So, if it happens in Dunwoody, does it automatically enable Brookhaven to participate?
No, it would start, yes.
And just to explain, from my knowledge, what, so when you have an officer, and let's say he sees somebody go into a house or something, is that when he would need to obtain a warrant? And then this idea of the electronic warrant, he'd be able to go on his laptop, actually submit the paperwork, and possibly be able to react faster to crime?
Is it a video conference?
It's a video.
You have to give the judge on screen.
Right. It's the same thing in the other person, except it'd be a Skype or one of those systems.
And it just allows your officers to be able to be more efficient with it.
It's for something they haven't witnessed, right? It's on information and...
Right, you know, you might have an investigator who's put together, found somebody who's hit 10 or 15 houses on burglaries, and they built their case up, and now they're ready to take the warrants, and they want to go, they want to take the warrant. They're sitting in the Brookhaven Police Department. They don't want to have to drive down to Memorial Drive in the middle of the night and find a midnight magistrate. They just go online, they sign on, it's a secured system, they see each other, the magistrate's actually, and I know this because my law partner, Cecil, used to be a magistrate, sit there in the middle of the night and do these electronic warrants. And they're all, the magistrates are familiar with the investigators and the police officers. They tell them the story, the magistrates ask the extra questions, they make the notes on their, on the paper copies, they have them electronically sign them and swear to them, and then they have their warrants without your officer having to spend an hour to go down to Memorial and come back. So, that's, that's the real help in the whole process.
Yeah, that's not, you know, you don't have to do, if you're, it's a crime in progress, you don't have to go get a warrant. It's all, this is all, like you were saying, the investigation that's occurred, that you need to build it up before you can go get one.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question on the...
Ah, chief.
I'm sorry, not for the chief.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, later. Marie, could you just, I know it took a long time to work out this IGA between the police and the parks, and I'm thrilled that we've come to an agreement. Can you just give us the broad outline of the terms?
Yes, the terms are $3.2 million to cover the seven months of police services that DeKalb County has provided, as well as now nine months, actually eight months and maybe a week of services for parks and recreation. That included on the parks and recreation side, the summer camps and programming that the county funded, as well as lifeguards for the swimming pools. Am I not, okay. The, the police, as we all know, has already taken over, so that side of the intergovernmental agreement is now completed. DeKalb County is now doing their policing unincorporated, and we now have ours, so that transition took place. The parks and recreation transfer will occur the day after Labor Day. Currently, beginning last week, low engineers, along with our building official and code compliance officers, are investigating, inspecting every one of our parks, and in preparation to prepare a report for me on findings. We have had some difficulty, but it was cleaned up and cured yesterday. We could not get keys from the county to enter into the buildings, but that has now been taken care of, and there's a way now for us to coordinate an inspection of the building with a DeKalb County employee present when we do that. So, we'll, we'll be doing that as well. I'm expecting the report to be completed by the end of this week. We'll have to catch back up now that we can get into the buildings, so we are making plans to do that. Thanks. This thing just fell down. And so, that's where we are. So, we are gearing up, we are advertising, and have already started our initial interviews for a Parks and Recreation Director. We hope to have an announcement of a director in the next, hopefully, three weeks. We're going through a number of resumes and applications that have come through. We are doing a nationwide search, and we have had a lot of interest expressed in this position.
I've got a question for, if you, did you have a follow-up?
Well, I just wanted to know a little bit more of the details of, so, because we are taking over the parks earlier than we had originally anticipated.
Correct.
So, in terms of the transition, our plan, obviously, there's already staff in place from DeKalb County. How is that transition going to take place?
My understanding is that the county has given them notice. Some of the employees are no longer located at the particular parks where they were assigned, so they will come off. I'm reviewing proposals right now for a maintenance program for the facilities and the grounds until we can get our Parks and Recreation Director up and running.
Why are they pulling them off before the agreements?
Well, the pools, some of the pools have closed, so they're moving those people out. The summer camp programs have ceased now because school's starting.
So, things that have regularly been pulled off over the past...
Right, yeah, so they're doing that. There has been some furniture removed, but I did put the county on notice yesterday that I wanted it back, so they are going to be bringing it back.
And supplies?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're going to have to, we'll be working with the city attorney to do the quitclaim deeds, because we will be acquiring all the parks and the improvements that are on those properties. So, that is something we will be coming back to you in short order as we make that transition and do the quitclaim.
Do you anticipate that we'll actually get surveys, boundaries, and meets on the parks? I know we've had some questions...
We'd like to get that, but the county has told us that they themselves don't have a lot of that information. Now, Bill has been communicating with the county attorney about getting all of the agreements and contracts that they have entered into. That's my greatest concern right now, that the county has obligated themselves to volunteer groups or other associations using the facilities. We've already received some phone calls from some of the operators telling us that their registration applications have already been approved by the county, and they're ready to go, and so Bill has been working with OV's, Brantley's office, to get that information. So, that's forthcoming. I don't think we've received anything yet.
Not at all.
But they are compiling it, and I know it's being worked on through the law office, and Roy Wilson with the county is gathering that data and sending it to the law office. I know that for a fact.
Wouldn't some of this be, the deed information or the meets and bounds be in the, just the records down in Superior Court? Maybe just check the deed book for some of the conveyances?
You silly lawyer.
I think you just made Bill's day.
Is there an opportunity to get some of the information off the aerial, the GIS that we flew over?
Absolutely. And there's other sources too, like through their park plans, and, you know, what they've identified as the parameters or the boundaries of these particular parks.
We know what backs up to it, so we can figure it out by default.
Daniel, have you ever done a deed search? Don't we have, there are companies that do that pretty cheap. Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay. It's not too expensive.
Well, I understand. I do, you know, having been grown up in a stone's throw up Nancy Creek, I remember that park up there from years ago, and it was, we didn't know what...
Murphy Camlin?
No, not Murphy, not Camlin, Blackburn right there. You know, just fields. And, you know, that was, that was in the 50s and 60s. That's, that's been there forever, and so has Murphy Camlin. We'll see what we can find about it.
I mean, those conveyances, I mean, there were, I know there were surveys done, and they each find old conveyances in the...
We're hopeful. We'll hope.
Somebody's burned them or destroyed them, right?
We'll, we'll have an adequate quitclaim date.
Marie, are we obligated into 2014 with obligations that DeKalb might have made on those parks?
I hope not, but we just, we just don't know until they provide that. Some of what I'm learning thus far, some of the operators that have contacted me are telling me they've had verbal agreements, nothing in writing. They do have people that participate in their programs, and they've had these same participants for a number of years. So, it's, it's an expectation on their part that they're going to start operating in various parks that we have. So, they have been told not to do anything until we find evidence and we receive information from the county as to what the county has actually obligated themselves to on these parks. So, we just need to find out where all of that stands.
When do you anticipate to have this?
Well, they know that we're taking over the parks the day after Labor Day, and so that, that is the timeframe. I'm hoping by at least, you know, later than the last week in August, we have some understanding of that. You know, there is a concern, and I want us to be fair, and we need to be cooperative. We may have people show up for certain programs that they have signed up for a couple of months ago, and they believe that the facility is going to be available, and we'll just have to take a look at that on a case-by-case basis. You know, the good side...
Should we put notices on all the...
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to do that, but...
What about, I mean, I get, period, the Ashford Park Rec Center is a favorite Saturday morning birthday party. There's sometimes three or four. Who should I direct in the interim? Who should I direct those requests to? To you or to somebody? No, you laugh.
Actually, no, no, to Daniel right now. Sorry, Daniel.
I get one or two a month.
Not scheduling birthdays.
Right.
I get one or two a month, you know, how do I rent the facility?
Right, well, one thing that I am looking at, and again, depending on how the interviews go, and Mr. Rick Stone has been handling those screenings for me right now, and I'm getting ready to be scheduled to actually conduct interviews, however...
I just need a name.
Pardon me?
I said, I just need a name. Here.
Yeah, here, but here's, but here's the point that you all need to know, that I probably will be coming back to you to advise you, that with the timing of hiring a professional Parks and Recreation Director, there is going to be a need to attend to those parks, and even where the county has obligated the parks. Yeah, we're going to have to honor that, and we need to, you know, work with those groups, and there's a good side to that too, or positive side, and that is, we do want people at the parks, because if people are there, it's a safer place, and maybe it won't be broken into or vandalized, so there is a positive side to that. But in the interim, until we can bring on, who do we select as the director, I am exploring bringing on somebody on an interim basis, so that we do have a go-to person, so that when somebody's calling about a birthday party, there is somebody that can take that call, but more importantly, and just as important, when they're calling saying that they've got the kickball league showing up, and they have an agreement, and we don't have a copy of it, we only understand there's a verbal agreement. So, again, we want to be fair, and we don't want to shut anybody out, but we have to understand who's coming.
Well, in my mind, this is one of the most important things we're doing as the city, and I know that we're taking it over several months earlier, so I fully support the idea of having an interim director. It's not going to be perfect, but I think we need to be as ready as ready can be.
Exactly.
And it's going to be a lot to take over and a lot of unknowns, and as every day we're finding out what we don't know and the unanswered questions. But I do want to congratulate you for working out this agreement. I know it was difficult and contentious at times, but in the end, good sense prevailed, and I appreciate that you saved the city at last count about $2 million on this, so...
Thank you, and thanks to our city attorney.
Good work, team.
Thank you, thank you. And one other point to add to that interim position, there's also the maintenance aspect, so there will be a maintenance transition too, because we want to keep the parks clean. And the thing that I've been finding out here, knowing it for the last several months, but confirming it here, especially in the last several weeks, is, is that each of our parks have, you know, friends of the parks, and we do have people in neighborhoods that are very proud of their parks and take care of their parks and are very watchful of them, so that is to our benefit. I had a meeting yesterday with two individuals representing two different parks, and they're really a good resource, and so we're going to depend on them heavily as well.
Great.
Back to the police IGA. I'd like to get the chief up here if I could, just, and I'm not going to grill him about what's in the IGA, but I kind of want to give, for the benefit of the folks here, and for ours as well, as to what, this came up with a question this weekend when, with the fatality that Georgia State Patrol was handling that investigation. Explain why that occurred, and then explain what other services we would, we still would have access to, or we would be able to use on a per need basis.
Well, give you an example of other, other resources that we have available. Special operations team, SWAT team would be available through MARTA, Dorville, North Atlanta, the multi-jurisdictional SWAT team. Actually, we had a meeting with them, and we're looking to join that entity. As far as a helicopter, helicopter's another asset that we could seek resources from. Atlanta has offered, Georgia State Patrol has offered, as well as accidents. A lot of the cities end up using Georgia State Patrol, they have what they call a SCAT team, which actually comes in and reconstructs serious or fatal accidents, and that's why they were called in this one.
What's the cost to the city for that? Is that...
There is no cost with GSP coming in and handling the investigation.
So, they have experts on call that we can use and things like...
Right.
So, were they there pretty quick, I would think?
They were there very quick.
Okay, all right.
Do you have to initiate that call?
Yes. And it's frequent. A lot of the sheriff's departments around actually use State Patrol to handle accidents on state roads.
Sure.
But it's only on state roads?
I believe they'll come on, they won't go on private property, but they'll, they'll go on, I believe they'll go on the school roads. That one, I'm not sure on.
But Peachtree's district, state roads, okay.
All right. Well, thank you. You guys have any questions for the chief on other services?
No, got a couple other questions on some of the consent items. The lights on Beaufort Highway, I saw recently in a press article that we were also getting sidewalks on Claremont. Will there be similar lights along those, or is that, I think I may have got an answer, I just wanted to...
Yes, there should be, but I'm going to let the Public Works Department confirm that.
Hi, Claremont Road won't have the decorative type lights, pedestrian lighting, and they will be looking at additional street level lighting on Claremont, but there'll be sidewalks both sides.
Okay.
Of course, Beaufort has sidewalks both sides, and a raised, six-inch raised, non-landscaped, for the most part, non-landscape median that can also act as a pedestrian refuge island for safer crossing to the other three lanes on the other side of the road. But there will be decorative lighting at the pedestrian level and some at the street level on Beaufort.
This is a non-landscape divider, and obviously was designed that way for whatever reason. Do we as a city have the opportunity to come back after the fact, and are we permitted to landscape that and beautify it?
Yes, yeah, we'd just have to go back to DOT, because, you know, it is their right-of-way, and we'd have to get permission for that. Of course, they would want to be ensured that we would be maintaining that, and then anytime you get into planet islands, you've got to be careful on how they're maintained, because there could be a safety issue.
Sure.
If they're sprinkled, you know, does the sprinkler go off in the wintertime and ice the road, and then you have a liability, so, but there is a way to do that.
Another thing, as to that point, we have talked about this for a while, about better, more thorough crosswalks on Beaufort Highway in places where they don't exist, we're probably going to need some. Some of those, I've just heard from some residents, there are some good ideas for where they should go, where some of them should go. Will we have, we have no problem cutting through the median for the crosswalk, or will we have to get DOT approval for that as well, I guess?
We'll have to get DOT approval, but there's also an engineering standard on where crosswalks go, because if you just put them anywhere where there's not a really full intersection, and the engineers can speak more to this than I can, then you enter into a real liability, because it's truly not a safe cross.
Yeah, and with this project, the DOT will be adding in more additional crosswalks where they don't exist today.
Oh, will they? Okay.
And they're going to put in at least two of the, what they call HAC, or the pedestrian-activated signals that will flash and give a pedestrian a chance to stop traffic. The key is they want to try to coordinate those timings with the regular corridor timing.
Okay.
That's all interconnected.
Will they be doing those on the Claremont corridor with the improvements, with the sidewalks along Claremont?
They've looked at some of the existing crossings, and they're going to enhance those, make those better, with better visibility, but I'll have to get back to you to see if they're adding in any, any additional ones on that.
Can you recap that for us, like in a, in a regular email, so when we're asked questions by our residents, you know, we'll have a ready reference, and it'd be authoritative? And then the second part about landscaping is, are we permitted to do what we need to do or want to do for street scapeing, also outside the central median, on the side, off the sidewalks?
Well, part of, yes, but remember too, part of DOT's project is streetscape with the sidewalks and then pedestrian lighting that will be there, not the tall overhead, but more of a...
I think what Joe's getting to, when we get our comprehensive plan, we have a feel of the city, we'll be able to go back and supplement and kind of change it a little bit to, you know, enhance it.
Well, then, and also in our transportation plan, you know, we'll be looking at not only roadways, but we'll be looking at pedestrian paths, sidewalks, and then crosswalks, and then, you know, landscaping, because sometimes you can do that in creative median or create an island, and that's a traffic calming device too. So, yes, there'll be two opportunities to look at that, transportation plan and the comprehensive plan.
Are you privileged to what the plan incorporates today for landscaping, for example?
I know that our Public Works Department has all of that detail.
Okay, we don't have any input on that, do we?
Well, unfortunately, most of this project is after the fact, and was all done and approved and designed prior to the incorporation of Brookhaven, so any improvements we make will be after the fact where we take that over.
John, what is the, do you know the timeframe on the Beaufort Highway improvement project?
The DOT said it's going to be substantially complete January of 2015. I think they're going to have punch list items to go through March of 2015.
It's going to take that long?
Correct. They've, that's how long their contract is with the contractor, and a lot of that has to do with coordination of utilities. There's some retain walls and things like that, and there's utilities happening at first, so...
And the Claremont Road, is it, do you know what the timeframe is for that?
Actually, that's going to be finished a little sooner. It started later, but it's, it's less in terms of total length, although that's fairly intricate. They're going to do a lot of retaining walls on that too.
I'm not very familiar with the Claremont Road. Where exactly is that, and what does it include?
It's from I-28, or I-85, sorry, to Beaufort Highway, and it'll be sidewalks on both sides of the road. It's about a mile and a quarter, the total length down the south.
That's a key piece.
Any kind of bike paths?
No, the bikes, the sidewalks themselves are, it's going to be tough to fit a fully ADA, five-foot sidewalk. ADA, five-foot sidewalk. There's some pretty narrow slopes and shoulders that are out there existing, and...
Were they going to be four feet?
No, they'll be five feet.
Okay.
At a minimum.
At a minimum, five feet, okay.
So you didn't have to do any right-of-way purchases?
The DOT did quite a bit. They've been acquiring for almost a year and a half, two years.
Wow. So that's what drives the cost significantly?
It did drive the cost up, and the DOT did all the design, they did all the acquisition and all the construction.
Yeah.
On that Claremont, as well as on Beaufort itself.
Now, that's not a state highway, though, is it, Claremont?
Claremont, that section is, yeah. It ends at Beaufort Highway, but then the bar north is not.
So in state highways, in we, in our transportation plan, would we be able to look at striping for things like bike paths or things like that?
We will, but I guess it's with the caveat that everything along a state route has to get permitted and approved.
Approved, right.
So, when the, when the comprehensive transportation plan is going on, it's real important to know what those DOT criteria are, so that you can get a good feel for what is realistic and what will be approved.
You might know the answer to this, or Bill, Mike. The right-of-way for Claremont north or west of Beaufort Highway, Sham, that's Chambley. Do they have the sidewalk? Do we know if they have the sidewalk as well? Because I know they have both lanes of Claremont, but how far does their border go? Do we know?
What I know is the Claremont right-of-way is totally from, starting with Beaufort, going north to about Airport Road. The, the right-of-way is totally within the Brookhaven City limits.
We took all, we took the entire road, including right-of-way.
Okay, all right.
It was up there where they, we had, they wanted the road up at the north, and we took the, we took the road to Claremont.
Okay.
So we have all the right-of-way. Now, we probably, we...
Not on the other side, though, right?
Both sides. The road's ours.
Okay.
Yes, and I think the city limit stops and it angles over to the west, just north of Airport Drive. And then, I think from that point on, it's a city.
Chambley.
Both right-of-ways are in Chambley, north of Airport.
Yes.
Is that right?
Because that's totally in Chambley.
Yeah, because that's been confusing the residents.
Sure.
It's Chambley Dunwoody, that is completely in Chambley, on our border. Do they, do they have the right-of-way on our, on Chambley Dunwoody? Do we know on our side?
I've checked the charter.
Okay.
And did I understand that we were going to get a more, a full briefing on this Beaufort Highway project in our, the second half of our retreat coming up?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, thank you. With some other planning projects, too.
Great.
Thank you.
I had a question on the Tyler Financial. The 51,000, is that a one-time, or is that an annual, or what's that, what's that amount?
Bonnie will address that.
There were, there were three payments that totaled roughly $51,000 in there. Was that, is that a one-time, or is that an annual?
Well, it's a combination. There'll be a licensing fee in, but there's some training that goes with it. We'll pay for the training as that goes along, so I'm not sure what, what segment that is.
Okay.
That's most likely the initial licensing fee.
I guess going forward, what will...
There'll be annual maintenance.
Okay.
Once it gets installed. There'll be a cost for the training and also the migration of the data from our current system.
Do you know what an anticipated future amount would be on an annual basis?
Let me email that to you. It's in the, in the cost proposal. I've got the total amount, but I don't have the breakdown.
It was, I mean, for the maintenance, it was less than $5,000?
Yeah.
A year for the, for the ongoing maintenance?
It's the implementation and the transition training is the cost of the part.
All right, next?
Next item is under Presentations and Reports, and this is just going to be a brief report. It's on our apartment inspections update. We did begin August the 5th last week, whereby first group of apartments owned by the same owners, three of them who are the volunteers, they were given their 72-hour notice, and then the inspections commenced after that. There's still some inspecting to do. Hopefully, it'll be done by the end of this week, if not early next week, as we're getting ready to give notice to the next apartment complex next week and give them their 72-hour notice. We had an information meeting with the apartment owners and landlords, and later that same day, we met with tenants and residents of the apartment complexes. So the information has been disseminated. The Apartment Association took all of our information and notified their entire membership, so they're aware of it. And this is for the exterior inspections for the International Property Maintenance Code. That's what is being inspected, and that's the program where it will be done in 18 months, and inspecting 66 complexes in the city.
So we had, we had three empty up immediately to volunteer, which was great.
Yes, by the same owner.
So that's basically the first three weeks, and then we do them one a week. What is the process for how we're selecting the next candidates and then thereafter?
Well, we do have the second apartment complex identified, and then after that, we're going to go alphabetically.
I got you.
And that's how we'll move forward from there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any major problems or stumbling blocks that you see at this point?
No, I'm not seeing any. I, I think that, you know, the message needs to be given out to all the landlords and owners one more time. I, we tried to make that clear, but I think we need to just keep repeating it so that everybody understands. This is a cooperative effort. You know, the city is not looking for any gotchas. What we're looking for is to be sure that their properties meet the International Property Maintenance Code. We're going to be reasonable on our expectations for them to cure any issues. However, if it is a life safety matter, then we're going to expect immediate results. Other things, chipped paint, cracked sidewalks, as long as it doesn't create a broken ankle or the possibility of such, but, you know, we will work with the owners and give them reasonable time, because we want this to be their improvement and correction plan, not ours. So it will be a joint effort to identify what's reasonable and to get the improvements made, because that's what the goal is. We want the places cleaned up, and we want them brought up to code.
I just need to commend you and your group on how well you put that program together for the announcement and how we were doing it.
Thank you.
We, Jim and I, we're here for that, and we got to hear the feedback after the fact. And overall, I think we had like 40 apartment complexes represented, 35 to 40?
Yes, we had, we had quite a few here.
Right, out of 72, that's, that's pretty high. And a lot of them own more than one, so I think we were higher represented than that. But overall, they were really impressed with the level of communication, and very, very cooperative in their spirit, and I think they really loved it. So have, have you, I know it's early, but one of the things that we were trying to accomplish in doing that was to make sure that the notice got across to the residents.
Yes.
And we, we needed to elicit their help in doing that by posting, by having bilingual personnel on hand to make sure that, are you seeing that working successfully?
Yes, I am, out of the Communications Department, especially Dana Johnson. She's been the liaison to the Hispanic community. There were a number of interviews that she gave on their television station, so that word has gotten out, and I'm very pleased with that, and very pleased with the efforts that they've made in communicating that. And I don't see us stop talking about it.
Right.
You know, we want to continue to talk about it. We want to continue to reach out to the tenants as well as the landlords. So, you know, we've got a good group of landlords that are interested. We've gotten their attention, and I want to keep their attention. So we do need to meet with them on a regular basis. Penny Round, who is the liaison for, she's the lobbyist with the Apartment Association, she's making herself available to help communicate to her membership, so we want to use all resources that we can.
That's a great program. It's a real benefit to the city for us.
Right. Well, I thank the council, too, for approving that additional contract so that we could get a team out and to focus on nothing but this, to get it done in a quick order.
What is the typical time period that is given to a landlord to make the improvements?
It depends, you know, if it is cracked sidewalks, I mean, well, I should back up. It depends on what the list includes. You know, if, if there are some more severe matters, it could be a time period of a couple of weeks, or it could be a couple of months, depending on what needs to be done. Especially if, let's say there's chipped curb and some cracked sidewalks, and maybe some of the concrete footings that sometimes are seen at the ground level for swing sets and other things that, you know, might, sometimes, and we all remember, you get on the swing and the whole thing rocks because it's trying to come out of the ground. We would want to work with the property owner there so that they could bring one concrete truck in and get it all done at one time, so they can get a better price and get it done at times. So that's something that just needs to be staged, you know, where the real, the real point of demarcation for us is if it's life safety, that's immediate. And even when I say immediate, that could be 72 hours or even a week, or it could be 24 hours, depending on what the severity is. Whereas some things are just really routine maintenance, we want to work with the landlord. You know, they have a budget, and we want to make sure that, you know, that they're factoring that into their maintenance program as well. So maybe they've had it scheduled for two months from now. Well, we'll work with their schedule. We're not going to tell them to do it two months early, because they've probably assigned funds on something else in the project. Now, if they agree to two months, we're going to be back in two months checking. So that's going to be the important thing. You know, we're, we're going to expect what we inspect, you know, so that's, that's what we will follow back up on.
And I think that's going to be the key, is letting them know, you know, initial discussions I had with the property owners that went through the first inspection, you know, they got a long list, and a lot of it were things that, that they do during the normal course, but there was no, there was only one or two items that had a specific due date on them. The rest, you know, so their question was, you know, we've got this list, what do we need to do? And they had gotten a partial list, and we're waiting on the rest. So, you know, I think with each complex, we're going to have to set some realistic expectations.
Yes.
Based on the, not only the work that needs to be done, but also the ocean structure. In this case, it's, it's two brothers and a, and one of their sons that does all the maintenance. They own the properties and do all the maintenance. So, you know, I think we're just going to look at it on a case-by-case basis, but as Marie said, I think they understand what the critical items are, and they had already had a number of them scheduled for repair, but it's, it's the minor things that are on the list that, that we need to look at, giving them some realistic time to do.
Exactly. And one thing, too, that, and I'll, I'll talk with Megan and her team, because this is something that truly needs to be communicated. When the inspector is out there, and depending on the size of the complex, it could take them a week, or could take four days with two or three member teams, or it could be a small complex and it's just one person going through. The day that inspection is done, at the end of the inspection, a handwritten copy of the notes that the inspector found is given to the landlord. As Mr. Iyer said, the volunteers, you know, got the list, but they didn't get the complete list. We like doing it that way, because there's instant feedback. Immediately, you're going to know, this is what was inspected today, and this is what we found, so they can start thinking about it. And then, that will be followed up with a typewritten report of the entire inspection of the entire complex when that is completed. And then, the inspectors will sit down with the landlords and go over them, each of those items. So there really is a lot of dialogue that's going on, but the beauty of this is, there's not, the inspector's not out there doing their own thing and then getting in the truck and leaving. They are tearing off a sheet where they've handwritten all their notes and giving it to that landlord. So I think that's important, because they're getting immediate feedback, they're getting immediate information, so it's something that they can review in the next day that the inspector's out. They can say, hey, what did we mean by this? And the other important part, too, is the landlord is welcome to tag along, and in some instances, that might be a good thing, because, you know, if a certain matter is discovered, the landlord may already know about and say, well, that's on my schedule to take care of tomorrow, or I'm going to do that next week. So that kind of information and conversation is important also. So I don't want the landlord community to think that they're not allowed to be a part of the walkthrough. They're welcome to come along.
When we do programs like this, there's the potential for consequences, obviously. So, in the position of policymaking here, you like to try to anticipate worst-case scenarios. So I'm just, want to have a conversation here. Have we thought about, if we walk into one of these apartment complexes, and it's probably going to be a, and it's a situation where it's a condemnation, or it's a situation where we see a life-threatening situation, or a health-threatening situation that is untenable, have we given any thought to a contingency plan on how to assist?
That is being worked on right now. Susan Cannon and her team are looking at that. The purpose of these inspections are for exterior only. However, if a tenant invites the inspector in, says I'd like to show you something, they will go in.
You know, it's probably not inconceivable to think that you could walk into one of these complexes and from the exterior, see an extended problem with mold.
Yes, yes.
You know, you don't have to go inside to see that.
Right.
And then you're talking about air quality.
Right.
You know, health.
Right.
Children, long-term.
Exactly. And when that's discovered, when it's so readily apparent on the outside, and that's part of the inspection report, you know, those conversations are certainly going to be held with the owner of the complex. And that's why I mentioned earlier, that there's got to be this continuation of, building of this relationship, not only with the landlords, the owners, but also the tenants as well, because there has to be a contingency plan, because frankly, there are some units that we have that are questionable, and we do have serious concern. And as a result, the Community Development Department is already taking steps to identify that, to address it, so that if there is an emergency, something occurs and a family has to be removed, we need to know where they're going.
And I'm sure part of it has to include what resources are there outside, outside of the city government.
Correct.
To assist us with this. So can I ask that, as you go along, and I appreciate the update, and I'm sure we, we will be getting more of them from you.
Yes.
If, if a situation arises that's critical, would we be notified?
Yes.
Okay, without waiting for the second, two weeks on the council meeting?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, and you're talking about an emergency situation where somebody has to be...
If something dire happens, I think we, as council people, would need to be informed as soon as possible.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
The next items are the old business, which you all are familiar with from previous work sessions and of course, council meetings. The first one is the ordinance amendment to the definition of height and how height is calculated. This is going to be a second read tonight. We do have members of the community that are anxious and awaiting this, ready to pull permits. We've already reviewed plans, and we're just waiting for this ordinance to be considered for approval. The next item is the sign ordinance. It's a text amendment, which calls out for, you have to have a legally approved business, licensed business, before you can erect a sign for that business. The next item is, and item three and four, I'm going to ask that you defer this. This is all associated with the TRO. And that's all that I have for you on the...
I do have one question for you. On the sign ordinance, is that retroactive?
The active is, yeah.
As soon as it's adopted, that's the date that we move forward on it. We will not be retroactive.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Any new business that we'll be talking about now? Okay. All right.
For the rest of the work session.
Okay.
Amendment to the apartment inspections?
Yes, amendment to the apartment inspections ordinance. This has to do with the interior units, and I've had some conversations with some of you, and this is, I have nothing to present to you, other than the idea and the thought, and would like to be able to come back to you all at a later date with a draft. And that is to, as you know, we require a third of the apartments to be inspected, the interior, in order for them, the landlord, to receive their business occupation license. There are independent contractors that perform that service, and it is up to the landlord to select that 30% or 33% of their units that will be inspected, that they produce evidence that they did, and they submit the contractor's name or the inspector's name that did the work. What I would like you to consider is allowing us to go back into this ordinance and amend it to provide for an audit, so that if we have a concern or a need, that we would like to go back in and audit maybe 10% of the 33% of the units that have been submitted as meeting code. We have found in the past that some of the materials and reports that were presented led us to suspect that perhaps there wasn't a thorough inspection, so we would like the opportunity, given the need, to be able to go in and conduct that audit. And I, and we want to communicate that to the landlord. to go in and conduct that audit. And I, and we want to communicate that to the landlord community so that they know, so that everybody can be honest and make sure that the contractor they're hiring is doing their job. Because it is the landlord relying on their contractor to perform. And we have that inspection list included in the apartment ordinance now. And so we, we'd like to be able to have the ability to do that. So if you are in agreement with that, we'll start working on it. And that will come from the community development department to bring that back before consideration. And, and it will come back at another work session because we would want to produce a draft to you.
I'd like to also, and it, it may already be in there, but I also like to, if possible, increase the repercussions for a false report.
So the penalty portion of it?
Yeah, penalty and, and violation, those types of things. So that if we do find as a result of the audit that they have provided an incorrect initial inspection, that we can hit them with a harder fine or, or whatever it is that, that we can do so that there, there is some teeth in the, in that audit if it finds it.
What is the penalty currently? Do we know?
I think it's...
Well, they're cited and then they go to municipal court. I think it's, what is it, misdemeanor?
Maximum general penalty is a six months in jail and a thousand dollar fine.
What's the, what's the crime called? False report?
It's misdemeanor.
I know, what's it, I know it's a misdemeanor, but what would it be, what would it be called? Did I stump the city attorney on it? All right.
Oh, he's putting his glasses on. We're in trouble.
We also, we also have the clause in there where the, where the inspector can be booted from the approved list.
That's a minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, remove, correct.
I think it's important to have teeth because there's a huge potential for abuse. Like, you know, we've talked about this before. So we got to make sure there's no collusion and there's that type of thing.
Marie, do you happen to know what kind of compliance we've had to date on these interior apartment inspections, just to get the occupation license on the, on our apartments?
I mean, they've complied with the ordinance as it's stated.
Okay.
But it's just merely presenting a report.
Right.
That they've done it. And it's signed by the, the inspector that performed the work.
Okay.
So we'll probably also want to include the administrative side on what that report should start looking like, identifying the exact units. I think that's already part of it. But I'd like to see more of, you know, using our checklist for each of those units and checking off physically that they've checked this, that they've, you know, inspected this. So we do really have a document that if we do have concerns, we can go back into that unit with that actual inspection report for that unit with that inspector and walk through and, and go through the inspection together.
I believe there also was language at, at the bottom where the, the inspector had to personally, personally attest to having inspected the unit.
Yes.
And that it met the standards for each and every unit that...
Correct.
That they had to fill out. So you put them on record of, of signing each inspection report.
Can we consider maybe if there are X number of registered complaints about an apartment complex, a situation going on, going on, they get moved up in the inspection list instead of going alphabetically, they get bumped up?
That's a very good question. I know what answer I'd like to give, but I'm going to look to the city attorney.
I think that you can go forward if you had, if you have a life safety issue that's there that you can go forward and you can move out of the range. You have to have a rational basis for what you're doing.
Of course. Life safety is what I'm thinking of.
So if you had a life, if you had a life safety issue, I don't think that you would get in trouble for go ahead, going ahead and moving into the front of the line. But otherwise, you know, alphabetically or random, pick them or any other, other schemes that were random, that you didn't show that you were, that's right, targeting is the right word.
Right. Apparent need is what we would be addressing on a priority basis.
Right.
Are you all in agreement for me to come back with a draft?
Yes.
For you all to take a look at? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The next item, the speed limit ordinance, we're not ready to present any conversation or discussion on that. So you'll bear with us. We'll wait a couple of weeks. And we're working towards getting our streets certified to run radar.
It's correct in that ordinance that the speed limit for all streets in Brookhaven would be five miles an hour. Is that correct?
Well, that could be a fast walk.
So we, we can't put up radar until the street's certified. And we're a couple of weeks off of that. Okay. So I know that we're having conversations about radar, which would be most, I think, the portables at this point. Can we discuss this? Is this, is this a good time to bring it in since we're talking about speed limits? I have a couple of comments I want to make. Okay. So I know that the options are portable and or stationary. And I think the preferred initial start would be with portable to, to roam around for a week. You put them in stealth mode and they're doing an evaluation for one week to see what the actual...
You're, you're talking about the trailers and that, the actual lasers that the officers would use.
That would be the, oh, are we talking handheld?
Yeah, we're talking handheld.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the stationary.
Yeah, the stationary, the displaying ones that you're talking about, we could put those up at any time when we purchase one.
Okay. Are, are they, are they, are we moving? Is that part of the plan to get this? What's the timing on that? I mean, what are you looking at?
Mid-year budget adjustment.
Which is?
In September, both meetings in September.
Next month.
Okay. So I, yeah, because we've had a number of requests for those already as traffic coming.
We could rent those too, couldn't we? Can't you rent them?
Probably.
Can you look into that already? I think that's really good. Good idea.
Can the police still utilize pacing for speed control?
Yes.
Okay. So they don't have to be certified to do that? Is that a misdemeanor?
But the, these, these are the things that say it's flashing if you're above the speed limit. These, that's, that's the kind of sign you're talking about?
Yeah. What we're looking at purchasing down the road was, was getting those signs that actually flash when you exceed the speed limit. The speed limit is posted on it. And there's also another attachment that we could get with them that's fairly reasonable now that would actually assist with traffic studies where it gives us the amount of cars going depending on, it will tell us what time of day, how fast they, they were going, the average speed and things like that.
But it, that mechanism doesn't issue citations in any way, does it?
No, it spits it out as you fly by.
So it's a tool for analysis.
Yes, we know that, right. Gary, just a second. So what's the, no, the question I wanted to ask you is, I forgot. I'll come back to it. Okay.
Have, do you know if the police have issued any speeding on pacing or as of yet?
I'm not sure what they issued as of yet, but they've been averaging anywhere from fourteen to sixteen tickets a day and probably about the same amount of warnings a day per shift. So.
I remembered. I would like to entertain that we look at buying rear tear, tag scanners for at least two police cars to enhance this whole situation of monitoring what's going on in Brookhaven. From the reports that I've, I've heard about and read about, they're an invaluable, they're an invaluable asset and have the capability of paying for themselves fairly quickly.
Yes, they're, they're a valuable tool. A lot of departments are going to them. I've previously used a number of them. And that's something after the mid-year budget we'll go through and we'll research. Also, one of them I purchased on a grant. We haven't, you know, reviewed that opportunity yet either. So.
Okay. The grant is through who?
One of them we've got through the Burn Justice CJCC grant and the other one, Governor's Office Highway Safety.
In addition to that, I do want to explore doing that. But I also want to explore, there's maybe some civil liberties issues with those tag readers. I've read about some of them and I, and I'm aware a little bit as well. There are some states that have some statutes that's kind of, I think Maryland is one of them, that has some, you know, safeguards for making sure that, that the way those things are used are done in accordance with preserving civil liberties. I'm not saying I'm against them, just saying I just want to be careful about how our policies surrounding the tag readers.
Yes, sir. In Georgia, they've been used probably for at least five years now. And I think most of them have tested in court.
Chief, while you're up there, so can you give us just a quick recap on the first two weeks of, of our force? I know your folks have been getting thumbs up and high fives everywhere they go.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's actually been very exciting. We hit the schools this week. That was our priority. Received a lot of accolades from, from a couple of the principals. Received a request for tomorrow for another school. They made arrests. I think we recovered two stolen autos during the past first week, actually. They made arrests on both of them and got weapons out of both of the cars. This morning, they just made an arrest on an armed robbery we had over the weekend. And it was actually two students from Crosskeyes High School. They weren't at school for the last couple of days. So we, we found them on Beaufort Highway. Other than that, we, we had the unfortunate fatality of the accident this, this weekend, couple of burglaries. And other than that, we've been, they've been very active. Our, our detectives already are averaging fifteen, fifteen cases per detective. And we've only got four detectives. So that's one of my mentions that probably is going to, real quickly.
Chief, I've only heard accolades.
You have, you have resumes on some detectives?
Yes.
Okay. So you're ready to go on that?
Actually, what's going to help out with that, the original plans were we were still looking at crime scene investigations. We're actually vetting and going through background checks on crime scene.
Okay.
Assistance right now. So that'll help out tremendously. But our, our evidence room is actually being, it's about a quarter of the way filled up already. We had a rape over the weekend too, which we made an arrest on.
So you're saying we've got fifty or sixty cases under investigation? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
And these are all happened in Brookhaven? Are they, are they break-ins or what type of?
Everything from rapes to thefts to identity theft to fraud to burglaries. It's a whole gamut.
Any surprises? Is it pretty much the kind of crimes you thought you'd be fighting here?
It's pretty much, but it's a little more active than I thought it would.
Well, didn't we anticipate at the outset we'd, we'd see a spike?
We, yes, we would see a spike. You know, the, the officers are doing very well on their response times. We're, we're monitoring that. Computer system, there are some glitches along the way too that we're, we're working out, both in-house on our computer system and through DeKalb County, through communications. But I, I think overall, everything's working very good.
I know Joe was about to say it, but I'll, you know, so we don't sound like a broken record. I've gotten nothing but really phone calls, emails, stopping on the street, you guys are great. They love seeing you. You've done a great job with your hiring. A lot of the interaction, people have had interaction with the officers going above and beyond. And you were, might've been on the, where there was graffiti in Lindwood Park, the gang graffiti and the officers took, I mean, it was gone within a couple of hours of somebody having reported it. They went up and painted it on, on their own. Just things like that, the responsiveness and, and the level, the quality of, of the officers that you have hired is, is amazing. And we are really, I'm pleasantly more surprised than I thought I would be surprised. So I'm very excited about our police force and thank you for what you're doing.
Well, we appreciate it. And if you tell the residents too, they can stop feeding us.
Having a weight, weight game, yeah. Bill, do they have to report free, free meals? I mean, is that like a gift?
I don't think so.
The doughnut shops would be out of business.
I don't think they're, they're not getting doughnuts. I don't think, they're getting barbecue and pizza and things like that. What have you gotten? What have you been eating?
Actually, I've been making them late. We had National Night Out last Wednesday, I believe it was. And we actually got invited. Because we, we just started. So generally, we're going to plan a big event every year. But because we just started three or four days prior to that, the neighborhood actually had, different neighborhoods had four events. Broadwood Park had one. There was one on Peachtree, all over the place. So we, we tried stopping all of those too. Got to meet the firemen there and all the officers had a good time intermingling with the people. So.
Congratulations. You guys have done a great job.
That's right.
All right, next.
Well, we'll call the chief back up again. Because the next one is his report regarding the alcohol times, serving times. If you recall, several weeks ago?
Yes.
You and all, we had that open forum and that was the conversation that came out and requested that he report after he was up and running as to what the neighboring jurisdictions are as far as closing times and last call.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We did finally receive from DeKalb. We asked a couple of weeks ago for statistics. We, we broke the study into two, two separate sections. One of them was we checked all of the surrounding municipalities to see what their closing times were and actually charges and things like that. We're in the process now of providing a report or getting a report together for you on that. Just to sum that up, out of the surrounding suburbs, six actually have two o'clock closing times. One, the City of Atlanta, I believe, just changed theirs to two thirty AM. And then three of them, Decatur, the city, and then DeKalb and Fulton, all have four AM closing times Monday through Friday. And on Saturday, their closing time is at two fifty-five.
What time was it, the first part of that?
It's either three fifty-five or I just rounded it out to four AM.
Okay.
And then that's Monday through Friday for those three jurisdictions. And on Saturdays, it was at two fifty-five or three AM.
And that was Decatur, DeKalb and Fulton?
Gotcha.
But City of Atlanta is two thirty?
That's, that's what we, we were able to give for information. I believe they just changed theirs recently.
Well, it was rolled back a couple of years ago in Buckhead, I know. I don't remember if it was City of Lide. Okay.
And then the second part of it was we, we looked at the statistics that we did receive from DeKalb. Now, keeping in mind that the statistics we got from DeKalb are probably on the low end just because we found out, that was a few of the glitches that we were working out over this weekend. We found out DeKalb has a lot of off-duty officers working at various locations within the City of Brookhaven right now. What we found out was their communications would actually contact the officers directly. So there was no case punch. There was no record to us and we had no idea what was going on. We found that out through a citizen complaint, right, I did on, on Saturday. So they've been contacted and they've been instructed from now on, any case that's involved in Brookhaven will be initiated and given a case number and will be notified. Because I, you know, we basically told them it puts the officer in jeopardy because we don't know what's going on. And we need the statistics for ourselves. But what we did was we received all of the, we asked for, we gave them all the addresses of the consumption liquor license holders in, in the City of Brookhaven. And we broke that down. And we're still compiling the list. We actually have what types of cases it was, but that was, it was almost prohibitive to go through each individual one because it ranges from burglar alarms to parking complaints. And then some of them in town of Brookhaven, for instance, don't break down the suites. So all you're getting is an address and it might include five restaurants and a bunch of apartments. So we couldn't break any of that down. But the ones we could break down, we did. And what we found out were, there were nine liquor license establishments with an average of over fifty calls for service. And that's what we're looking at is to see where the problems are at. So out of those nine, they had over fifty calls for service reported, fifty percent of those had, actually fifty percent of those establishments had calls for service that were between the hours of two and six. So for instance, if they had a hundred, hundred calls of service, and this is going from July first, 2012 to July first of 2013. So for instance, if they had a hundred calls for service, fifty percent of those calls were actually between the hours of two and six, which drains resources on the police department. So that's, those are the ones that we were actually looking at. There are nine of those establishments. Most of them are all along Beaufort Highway. And we're going to be paying special attention to those. One of them over the weekend, we found out, had, actually had a line of people going up a staircase. It was before four o'clock in the morning. And it actually was right at four o'clock in the morning. So, and that shouldn't have been happening.
For entrance into the club?
Yes.
Can you also, can you, when you do some more investigating on this, can you kind of break down the times a little more specifically, like two, three, four and five rather than from two to six?
We, we could. We just, this, like I said, we just got these statistics Friday night.
And the next time you do, if you give us some more information next time?
Actually, we have it all broken down where you could look at, at all of them. So.
Chief, when you make the comment that fifty, fifty, fifty calls for service for the year, and so twenty-five of those are going to fall between the hours of two and six, that's what that means?
No, we had, we, what I did was I picked out the nine top.
Right.
Calls for service locations.
Right.
Out of those nine, they averaged over fifty, those nine averaged over fifty calls for, for service that were reported to us.
For the year?
And that's, yeah, that's low. And that's, yeah, that's low.
And then you said fifty, fifty percent of those were from the period of two to six AM?
Right. Fifty percent of those calls were from two to six AM.
Which means twenty-five, twenty-five calls, half fifty.
Well, that, that's an average, but.
Okay.
There were some with a hundred, over a hundred calls and there were some, most of them were over fifty.
Oh, you're saying each club averaged fifty? Or there's all nine together averaged fifty?
Give you, just an example, we had one club, a hundred and one calls, um, fifty-three of them were from two to six AM. One club had seventy-seven calls, thirty-seven of them were from two to six AM. One club had eighty-three calls, uh, thirty-nine of them were from two to six. Um, one club had twenty-seven, eighteen of them were from two to six. Uh, eighty-three, one had eighty-three calls, one, it was forty-six of them were from two to six. One had sixty-eight calls and out of those, forty of them were between two and six.
So it's about fifty percent, of course.
On an average.
Yeah.
There are some outliers here that, that, you know, uh, you've got a town Brookhaven, three oh five Brookhaven Avenue, where you've got a high number, a hundred and six, but only four in that after hours, obviously, cause they must be closed.
No, as I mentioned before, town of Brookhaven, there's no way that the cab could split up what suite or what location those were coming from. So town Brookhavens, for instance, if you had four, I'm not sure what the address is, but that would include, say, Noche, old.
Yeah.
Wine Dog Club. It would include all the apartments. I mean, includes that whole section.
So the town, well, I know you've got this town Brookhaven, Town Boulevard, fifty-nine and three, and then you've got down here a little lower, three oh five Brookhaven Avenue, a hundred and six calls and four between two and six.
Right.
How am I to understand those, those two? So that first one?
One address is, is one street along town Brookhaven, the other one is one, one other street.
So it's just a whole street?
And the other one goes along LA Fitness.
Yeah.
So, and then, and for some reason, the cab didn't break those down. Dresden, Beaufort Highway, Peachtree Road, every, everything else is broken down, but town Brookhaven, for some reason, wasn't.
In every case for those, the, they're at about ten percent rather than fifty percent, it looks like, or even less than ten percent. Much, much lower percentage of after hour things.
Right.
And that may be because they self-impose a curfew there in town Brookhaven?
Possibly. You know, it depends on when the, the closing hours are.
Good, interesting stats. Do you think it needs a little bit further, uh, analysis or, or do you, do you feel like you've got a recommendation?
What we have, you know, the only thing I could possibly break down a little bit more is a lot of them, you know, say out of this one business that might have a hundred and one calls. Some of them are burglar alarms, some of them might be parking complaints, some of them might be medical calls, some of them might be a robbery in the, in the parking lot or assault, you know, we, so we could break that down a little bit. That's very time consuming that we just didn't have time to do yet.
Do you need some help? Do, I mean, we can get someone?
No, we, we, Rosanna, the assistant's been helping us with it, so.
So are you ready to draw any conclusions or make any recommendations, or do you wanna crunch the numbers some more?
Well, I, I think based upon this, um, you know, if you have establishments that have, um, issues going on between two and six, and that's over fifty percent of the calls, there's, there's problems going on between two and six.
I think there's a variable here, and I may, I, I made this comment earlier, and I did it when, uh, we looked at this for the first time. Uh, this is good historical information. I mean, it's of value. Um, it's, it sets what could be a, a trend. I think the more important information is gonna be what you uncover, uh, with your police force.
That's correct.
And I think your presence is potentially gonna have a significant bearing on this. I mean, for example, uh, I was gonna ask you this before, but you don't need to address it if you don't want to. I remember there was a comment put out this week, talking about the North Precinct closing and that twenty-eight police officers were now gonna be reassigned. I don't know if that was what we had assigned to us for the full year, or if that's just what it was drawn down to, but if that's what we were working with, well, we're up to fifty-four now. So there's gonna be a significant difference in police presence and how situations, uh, can and will be addressed on this and get a real good reading as a barometer of what the situation is.
I believe, yes, councilman, I believe we could be more proactive in, in what we're doing, and that's what we're doing. It's, we're setting up priorities right now to try to address the problems that we do have in, in town.
And I know, uh, we're looking at, um, changing closing hours here. Uh, that's what's of consideration. Um, and I think the mayor's request for, how does this break down hour-wise? That would be good. You know, is it at two o'clock when people are leaving the majority of the places, or is it actually coming from?
Yeah, or the really bad things happening at four thirty or five, or they, you know, so, cause we have a, we have a balancing test we have to do here, is balancing business interest and, and the rights of people to go, uh, to these establishments and the rights of the property owners of the establishments and, and what, how it affects their business, or against the rights of what the quiet enjoyment of the citizens of Brookhaven, of their property, and the public safety aspect of, of, and the burden on our police department. So a little more specific information would help me, um, see how, you know, a closing time and balancing those interests with the, with the public safety interest will, make a clear decision. So.
We actually have the exact times, uh, when the call was reported.
And the type of calls too.
Yeah, the severity. We'll be able to generalize a lot of those, but I won't give, I won't be able to give an exact count on exactly what type of calls each one was, but some of them ranged from a three-minute, you know, handling of the call to some of them.
Right.
Averaged an hour to two hours. So, you know, those are the more serious calls.
Right.
You know, when I look at on this list, it's, it's, you'll see some, you know, some real blatant examples like two hundred and twelve, uh, this, a hundred and one. We're talking town Brookhaven. Now, that could be a potpourri of.
Well, that's, that's what I said. Those are all joined together.
Right, and.
They're not broken down by apartments, by restaurants, by.
Right. Uh, but there's like two, here's another town Brookhaven for a hundred and six. That's by far the majority.
Yeah, but the, only four of those occurred during the two to six timeframe. So that, that's, there's a distinction between like.
Gotcha.
The two hundred and twelve is, is normal time and the twenty-one of those.
And those two hundred and twelve might, might include ten to fifteen businesses.
Gotcha.
And, and apartments.
Yeah.
It might be somebody parked illegally.
It's an aggregate number.
Right.
You know, one of the things I'd like to point out is that I'd, I'd like for our city to consider, uh, taking our time on this change. As a new city, uh, I do think that, you know, we don't wanna rush to action on an issue that impacts businesses. And I'd like to allow our new police force to, um, to see what, what we've really got out there for, you know, twelve, I think the first twelve months, if we could get, just leave this issue and study it, rather than making, uh, pointless changes, I think.
I'd like to take that a step further. And I think, um, I'm in agreement with you. I think we need to take our time on this. I think we need to do our due diligence. We need to take into account historical, we definitely wanna document actual under our, under our purvey. And I wanna step outside the bounds of just keeping it here and get proactive and actually involve members on this list in a sit-down meeting with you and your staff, your sheriff in town. These are the rules. This is what we need you to do. And solicit cooperation from them in doing this. Um, I had a conversation on this earlier tonight. One of the suggestions was, um, get each of them to sign a commitment that they'll oblige it, you know, just like, you know, hey dad, I'm gonna get all A's next quarter in school.
Ask, ask them.
What's that?
Maybe the chamber can do that.
Okay, that's fine. Well, they can be part of the, of the meeting, but I think it needs to be between the city and the clubs. And it has to be understood that, you know, we're out here and we're gonna be enforcing our laws. And we need you to do certain things in order to maintain your status if you wanna remain in the business that you're in. Uh, we're looking at it from a life safety standpoint, from a nuisance standpoint, all the other things. Uh, and I'm going to, um, with your permission, I would like to go ahead and, and start to initiate, uh, that type of meeting.
Why don't we do this, Joe? I, I agree that there, a meeting with the chief of police and maybe some staff with a lot of the club owners is, is beneficial. But why don't we ask the chief, and Bates, I, I take your twelve-month thing too. Uh, I don't know that it needs to be that long, but I will, how much of a burden would it be, A, to have an update on this every three months? Is it, is the workload? I'm trying to figure out what the, maybe if it's just pure data, we could send it out to IT and get them to do it.
No, we, we can even update every three months.
I don't wanna burden you with that.
And to be honest with you, what Councilman Gaby was just talking about, we're actually setting up, um, plans to meet with a lot of the managers before we do start enforcement activities, uh, because the officers are realizing, I mean, right now, they're just getting acquainted with the community, so, uh, but we're meeting, we're gonna be meeting with the different establishments, letting them know what we expect and what we're gonna be doing and what, what they need to be doing.
Several meetings or something like, in different?
We're, we're just going each individual.
All right, okay. All right.
Excellent. I'm, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that.
In light of that, um, you'll recall when we had our open, um, meeting with all of the, the restaurants and, and bar owners, um, we did tell them that we would collect information. The chief would, um, take time to do that. And since he is going out now and, and setting up these meetings himself, um, you know, with each of these enterprises, do we wanna hold off on having another public information meeting? Because we did tell them that once we got some initial findings, and it, it sounds like the chief, you know, needs to get more information. Um, and this is data collected from other agencies and, and as he is able to collect his own, um, do you think maybe by the end of the year, or maybe in January, we could call back the community?
After New Years.
Right. And, and we'll, we'll talk about it then. So I, I, I know that they're waiting and they're waiting to hear some information as to, or an indication as to when they're gonna, you know, come back and assemble.
I think they're waiting to hear if we're gonna act on this first.
Well, they are, but we.
So they, they can, they can be told, well, nothing's happening until we're gonna have a meeting in January.
Okay, that's, that's good. That's what I'd like to be able to communicate.
That's around y'all.
We can have Megan do that and communicate that.
I haven't heard Rebecca.
If you all are in agreement with that. But we left that meeting telling them we would collect data and we'd come back and meet with them again. So I want to be able to follow back up with them to tell them when that meeting would occur.
Well, we also said that.
He needs more data.
We also said that the information that we were gonna be collecting was gonna be through our police force.
Correct.
And they've only been up for two weeks.
Right, that's my point.
It's not realistic to think that we could do something here.
I agree. That, that's my point. So I just, I just want us to effectively stay in the loop with the community. We made a promise we'd come back. So I wanna just give them information that we haven't forgotten, but we want more data.
How would you like to get that out?
Um, Megan's team can do that.
Why? Just through like email blast? Well, we pretty much know who they are. We have a list, right?
Well, we had a list. Remember, they signed in also. So we do have a way to communicate with them. And now the chief is, is making direct contact. So we have a couple of, um, ways to, to reach out to them.
Well, even if they're not, even if they haven't signed in and they were, they were at that meeting, we have everybody's.
We send invitations now from the meeting.
Excellent.
I'd, to add on to some of Joe's comments, I, I'd like to see the city sort of set some expectations for these businesses and, and, uh, and allow them the opportunity to sort of know what the game, you know, know what our target comfort level is. You know, if, if they're at fifty percent calls after hours two to six, that's unacceptable. Um, what is the acceptable number? Ten percent? Um, you know, I think that having a, being able to give some clear guidance to them would be helpful so that they, I mean, I don't know how they police themselves in that way, but, uh, I think it would be benefit, beneficial to, to those businesses if they really have a understanding of what, what your comfort level is from a safety standpoint.
I think the first aspect that we have to go after is just make sure that everyone's compliant with the current law that we have on the books.
Yeah.
And we have to make sure they understand.
Right.
Just as we did with the, uh, inspection, we went through what the ordinances were and everybody, everybody's singing out of the same hymnal.
Right.
Is that a code, um, when you, you saw them going up the stairwell after four o'clock, is that a code violation or is that a police, what is that? Just a violation of the?
The ordinance you're talking about?
Yeah. Is that, is that, is that under code enforcement or under police? Do you know?
It'd be under police serving, uh, if they were serving inside. There were, they said there were at least forty people outside. We didn't have resources that night to deal with that. So that, that's why I'm saying, we're gonna let people know first and then we'll set up plans and, and how to deal with it.
I'm just wondering if that is violation, if that's a police citation?
You, you can do it. The police will are the code enforcement. You do it. Generally speaking, those alcohol permits are dealt with by the police. Uh, sometimes you'll do licensing, the permittee, but more often, the code enforcement officer would walk in to see if they have their alcohol license posted on the wall. That's more where you find the code enforcement. When you're doing sweeps for people who are doing serving and serving after hours, that's usually a police function.
You, you mentioned there's a number of Decatur County off-duty officers that are contracting directly. Is, is that something that we wanna try to get a handle on and, and, I don't know if requires the right word, but somehow understand where off-duty officers are operating within the, the city limits?
We've actually contacted administration, Decatur County Police today, and, uh, we were ensured that any cases that came in, uh, ten of their officers that were off-duty would be documented and, and dispatched to a Brookhaven unit.
But is, is your policy that no Brookhaven officers will work inside of a club?
Right, not inside the club.
Just to, they'll work the parking lot, but not inside the club?
So I just wanna make sure I understand. I, I personally would like to, to see more data from our department, once you all get a handle on, on what the enforcement issues are. So you're prepared to come back with, to us on a regular basis and give us updates on the enforcement issues at the, at, and these, um, on, on all the clubs with alcohol. I mean, a lot of these clubs don't stay open past, you know, midnight or one o'clock.
Yeah, if you look at a lot of them, there, there's one or two.
Right. And there's some other clubs that are open till four that I don't see on the list, so. And then let me just make sure I understand. When you, when you talk about total calls for service, those would be everything from?
Burglar alarm to illegal parking in front of the business to a fight inside the business?
To late pouring?
Yeah, if, if there was a case made on it, right.
Do you have any kind of, I'm sorry?
And so, let me just make sure I understand. So that, uh, the citation or the ticket would be, it would, I mean, if it's a parking ticket, it's a parking ticket, but if it's a late pour or something, or an after-hours violation, then the club would be cited. Is that correct?
Right. The, the club and, and I'll have to review, I, I know our ordinance is being revamped right now.
Right.
But also the server could be cited too.
And so you, you may potentially have a breakdown of some of these numbers here that we're, that we're seeing?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Have you noticed anything about drunk driving, uh, violations on this? That's the one I'm most interested in.
The officers have made, I believe, three or four drunk driving arrests in the past two weeks.
This is, this is you?
The hours.
I'm talking about the historical information from Decatur. Um, do you know what those, these numbers?
No, that, that wouldn't be included in any of these because the drunk driving takes place out in the street and.
Right.
You know, they would have an address located with it, but they're not included with this.
I, I would be interested in you incorporating that in your review to us. Uh, that's gotta be available, that information, right?
Well, yeah, what we, what we would do is, we would just pull out drunk driving arrests and you could.
Right.
Break that out any way you want to.
Well, but we, we want it broken out of where it's happening, so there could be correlations.
Well, you have to kinda find out where they were leaving from.
If that's, yeah.
You see, a lot, a lot of them will end up going down Peachtree, coming back from Buckhead, or.
Right.
They, they could end up.
Does a police report include, basically, does it, do they ask for that type of information? Where are you coming from? Is it reported?
The only thing it's gonna do is say they were impaired driving down wherever they were stopped.
Right.
Unless they run their mouth and say, I was at so-and-so and I got, I had drinks.
Yeah, and the officer might include that, or whatever, and wish it be reported.
Well, but there's, there would be reference to direction of travel and address, right? So if, if they're stopped northbound on Peachtree, just inside the line, then, well, that's not.
You could infer certain.
Yeah, you could, yeah, exactly. I think that'd be interesting, you know, along those M lines, to see that information, see the, see the drunk driving, particularly the, the, the timing of it, and see if there's a similar, uh, increase during, um.
Sure.
During certain hours.
Well, there's our, um, there's, uh, heat maps that I think the county, or, or there's some agency that compiles all the data that, that comes in. I know from Decatur County, I've seen those things that show the dots, crime stats.
Crime tracking.
Crime track.
Are, are we gonna do this?
We have the capability with the system we have. Um, we haven't even reviewed it, how to get into that yet.
Yeah.
But there's, there's actually a component to the computer system we have. It's called, uh, P to P, which is people to police, where they're able to access certain reports and things like that.
I've had some residents ask about that, so to the extent we can, you know, when it's appropriate, when, 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 when the timing is right, I, I'd like to get us online and that because there are, I know a number of people that, that check that regularly. Also look at, you know, they have it to ping their, if something's happening within a certain radius of their.
We're trying to use that in electronic media too, as far as Twitter and, and Facebook and things like that, to put out lookouts and, and like.
Great.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next, um, three items under item number four, A, B and C, this is just to provide to you a heads-up of, um, items that will be coming before you, uh, August the twenty-seventh. Uh, these are matters that have already. these are matters that have already been considered by the planning commission, so I won't go into detail, because I don't want to usurp your review of those when the time is appropriate, but this is just for your information as to what's coming up, and this did, these items were heard of the planning commission last week. On other business, we do have a couple more presentations, and a few more presentations and reports, the first is the food trucks, RFQ update, Megan's gonna handle that.
Hi guys, you asked us to look at the possibility of bringing food trucks to Brookhaven, we did an IWQ, an ask-for proposal, we got two responses, and we have a committee that consisted of Dana, Bonnie, Brad, and I, we interviewed these, we also did site visits to the food truck events in Midtown Atlanta, Dunwoody, and Alpharetta, and based on this and the votes of the committee, we selected a vendor, and we are looking at possibly bringing food trucks on September 4th, when we start, take over the parks, we think this is appropriate kind of kickoff event to celebrate the takeover of our parks, and we are looking at doing nine events for the first season, our main issue is the budget, all of these other cities that we've worked with have partners or sponsors, and given that we're starting so late in the season, it's too late for us to get sponsors, so there is gonna have to be some city funding. Doing a really scaled back, the budget we think is about $5,000, and we are hoping to bring in about $1,300 in revenue from business licensing permits.
$5,000 total per event?
$5,000 total for the events that are just in September and October, obviously, next year the season would be longer and that budget would increase.
So you said $5,000 total event, how much for licenses?
$1,350 is how much we hope to bring in in revenue for licenses.
And that's, that's the only revenue generator we have?
Correct, right now.
Is that CBB money?
Yes, I've already talked with our finance director.
Has to do with that kind of stuff.
Yes, and as long as, we have to be able to promote it outside of Brookhaven, and as I had mentioned to some of you, you know, we're gonna be doing a welcome kit for all the hotels, some guests register, they'll get a calendar of events, so this will be on that calendar, as well as a pamphlet that we're putting together that will go into all of the welcome centers in Georgia.
What is the proportion of CBB money that has to be spent on things like this, promoting the city?
We get 40% of the entire revenue that comes in, that can be earmarked for events such as this.
And you can't spend it on something like a police officer or filling a pothole?
No, but the 60% that's part of the hotel motel tax, that can go into the general fund, but these funds have to be segregated for promotional events that bring in people outside, it's called the head and bed tax.
And that money will go to pay for policing of that event, as well as trash service, portable restrooms, and some other necessary expenses.
So which, which vendor did you choose?
We are looking at Fork in the Road, which is a coalition of the Atlanta Food Truck Coalition and Happy Belly, and they are the ones that currently do the events in Alpharetta, as well as Kennesaw and Midtown.
So when they do this, how many trucks are actually there?
It's a range, most, like Dunwoody has about 12, and that's what's about Alpharetta, they're saying for us, we would start with probably about eight, and see how it goes, it would be a mix of five dinner options and three dessert options likely, but they're putting it out to the trucks and see kind of who's available, most of them have commitments already in other cities, so we're kind of coming into this late in the season and get stuck with what's left, based on the commitments to other cities, we're likely looking at Wednesday as the best draw for us. What we've heard from both vendors is that weekend events and Friday nights don't usually work, and, as well as Mondays don't work, and kind of middle of the week is what's good for like, the after-sports crowd coming home from practices, is where we'll probably get our biggest draw.
And was there music included in Fork in the Road?
No, we're looking at, we know the mayor has some contacts, but we're also looking at other people in the city who are willing to play for free and work kind of for tips.
I know, and it's the mayor to actually be the entertainment.
That was an option. One of the biggest factors for it was seating, as well as their permitting experience in the other cities they've worked in.
So they provide seating and tables and things?
This one does, the other vendor did not provide seating, so the city would have to pay to rent tables and chairs. I know for some of them, people do bring like lawn chairs and picnic blankets, which is an option, but a lot of people are coming, and we also are concerned with the amount of rain, people are not gonna want to sit on the grass.
I noticed our neighbors to the north, in Dunwoody, were discussing an ordinance to allow alcohol consumption on parks, is there any alcohol consumption in these events?
We are looking right now to not do alcohol, that's something we can discuss for next year, but that was not our recommendation.
Nellie wants us to sell beer out of the concession stand, by the way, I think it'd make a lot of money.
Yeah, can you see that, are you that whole place?
We're not recommending that either.
So, we're getting, basically what you're saying is who's available this year, because commitments have been made, so in anticipation of next year, I guess you have to move early to make sure you're securing what you want, correct?
Correct, ideally, if we do well during our first few events and get the word out, and they get a good attendance, the trucks will make plans to be here next year, as well as we'll be able to get some sponsors hopefully, but they're not willing to commit to an event if they're only gonna bring 100 people or so.
Have you, can we not elicit the assistants from the chamber to get sponsors?
Well, you can ask.
So, so other than the seating, were there any other compelling reasons why you liked Fork in the Road?
The other vendor had some licensing problems in other cities that they had worked in, and been shut down, police kind of raided for nine unpermitted trucks, which we felt was a bad precedent, we didn't want to bring to our city.
Was that that article that you circulated about?
Yes, it was twice, and then the Atlanta event.
And that was, that was, I thought that was a misunderstanding with the, with the City of Atlanta's Health Department, I don't know if that was a-
They didn't give business licenses, as well as health permits. The other vendor we chose also has a higher rating for the health inspections, they require 90 and above for their trucks, which is one of the keys that also led to it.
That'd be a key for my wife, I tell you right now.
I'm not excited about eating out of trucks.
We also had some concerns, one of the vendors had mentioned that they could kind of get around permitting issues and find a loophole, and we didn't like that answer to our question, the vendor we chose, also one of their partners is an attorney who specializes in permits, they also had nine trucks that were already licensed in DeKalb County, which will aid us to move forward quicker.
And so, do we need to pass any particular ordinance or events permit to make this happen?
Looks like right now we can just require them to get a business license, some of the other cities do mobile vending licenses, which is another possibility for revenue for us, I think in Smyrna that requires both a business license, as well as a mobile vending license, which I think that's something we could look at for next season, we just didn't think that the vendor trucks would be willing to do that, we could get that in time to utilize our parks for this.
I want them to make the cheapest possible for them, you know.
Yeah, really?
It would be a business, it would be a business occupation license, and then a special events permit, so that way we would have that covered, because anybody else doing something similar would still have to get the same-
It wouldn't require each individual one, it'd be a-
No, it just would be a special events permit for the, for the activity.
Do they have to buy one every event, every week?
No, it's a, we would give the calendar, assign to that events permit, so it would be for those nine event nights.
But each truck would be licensed as an independent business in the city, and pay just for the year, which is $135.
So are you thinking, we talked before about a Blackburn, is that still a good choice?
That's still our first choice, both of the vendors like that selection because of the visibility on the road, and we thought it was a good way to get people coming.
Probably the best parking of any of them.
Parking, as well as to get people driving by, just for attendance, you know, coming back from Marist and some of the other schools in the area.
Is there a danger that the customers would be attacked by the LARPers at Brookhaven and the Blackburn Park? The people that dress on medieval?
They're on Sundays.
They're only there Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
But those medieval guys.
That's why we'll have police-
Will they bring their own LARPers to defend us, the customers?
You can ask Chief about that.
So do we need to pass anything to go forward with this?
No.
No. We're ready to go. Let's do it.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Excellent, thanks guys.
And so, your office will handle the promotion and PR on this?
We work hand-in-hand with the vendor, the vendor sets up their own Facebook and Twitter pages for it, and the city will link back and forth with those pages and promote it via our social media channels, as well as we'll put a press release, and we'll work with the vendor on signage.
And we're good on bathrooms and garbage cleanup and all that?
That stuff that we all have to get, we have, the city has to pay for and arrange, so my office will have to do all that planning.
That's part of the $5,000 cost. So we'll take that $1,350 permit fees and use that against the $5,000 plus for what our costs are, you know, any kind of sanitation, putting out any, any kind of cans, porta-johns, the police officer that will monitor the site, so we'll include that cost, and that'll come out of our CBB, but we'll be promoting it outside of the city, so that we can get people to come in and take a look at Brookhaven and enjoy a nice meal.
So you're, both you, Marie and Megan, in your opinion, the CBB investment is worth doing, you think this is something that-
Oh, absolutely, yeah, and especially with how we're gonna promote our hotels, you know, we're working on this packet bread, is helping me with that, and it's a welcome kit, you know, guests as they arrive and check into the city's hotels, we'll get a welcome letter, and there'll be some coupons in there, and then there'll be an event calendar, so that way if they're staying, if they're here for business or pleasure for a week or a night, you know, they can look and see where that is, we're gonna include also, if they're a runner, where they can go run, where our parks are, so it'll be a really good information, there'll be some little trinkets in there too, so they can remember Brookhaven and come back when their business takes them back here.
Okay.
Right now it's kind of just to get the word out, we're hoping next season to do something bigger, I know in some of the other cities they have kind of vendor tents, which we hope to use in the future, you know, kind of as maybe a meet and greet for the police officers, as well as, you know, come and ask questions about public works and those kind of services.
And that'd be great, so are we guaranteed certain food trucks, or I mean, we're sure we're gonna have enough food trucks to show up to make it a cool event?
The vendor does all of that, you know, we can say, hey, we want a barbecue truck, we can make requests, but-
But he's got a stable of trucks that are popular in other places.
Yeah, that was one of the things, they actually have 55, 57 trucks that work with this vendor, which is one of the reasons we chose them, the other vendor had a much smaller number, and it was a good mix of different types of food, and they go all over, from Atlanta all the way up to Kennesaw.
Great, I love the timing on this, this is actually working out great, to celebrate our taking over the parks, I think this is fantastic.
And that's what we're gonna pitch you as like a park celebration, people come and sit at your parks and-
We'll get the word out through all the friends of the parks organizations and things, this'll be great.
All right, thank you, Megan, good work.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, number two on other business, Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan, RFQ, we did launch that, last week, we had a pre-bid conference where the vendors came in and asked several questions as to what the city's expectations are, I will tell you that those that showed up, we had 16 different vendors who have expressed interest in preparing this plan, our deadline to receive their proposals, and this is qualifications, is August the 22nd, with selection to be made September the 5th. And that leads me into item three, which are the rest of the plans that we're getting ready to launch, the comprehensive plan, the Parks and Recreation Plan, and the Transportation Plan, we are looking now to bundle those, even though they will be separate plans, but we want, instead of just hitting and missing the consulting community, we're gonna launch all three separate September the 9th, that's the deadline, we hope we might be able to do it a little bit sooner, but we're shooting for September the 9th to be the absolute last day that we will solicit for qualifications.
So, so then again, you're gonna launch them as three separate plans, or as one?
Three separate, no, three separate plans, but at the same date, so that way, you know, what we do is we're communicating with the consulting community, those that have registered with us and expressed an interest, so we're sending them all out at the same time, we put them on the city's website and advertising in any venue that we can find through their community, so we just thought it would be easier, instead of launching one on a Monday and then on a Tuesday, and we just didn't want to confuse or lose anybody that might have an interest, so it'll be an announcement of three separate plans and a request for three separate RFQs, so if somebody's interested in all three, they'll submit three separate responses of proposals, of their qualifications.
And so will they, will the Parks and the Parks and Rec and Transportation be folded into the-
Yes.
Comp plan, is a part of the, part of the task of whoever does the comp plan, will be to take the information?
We'll have to bring this in, correct, and most likely, what I'm expecting is, Beaufort Highway Plan, Improvement Plan, Transportation, and the Parks and Rec Plan will be completed prior to the completion of the Comprehensive Plan, they'll all be working simultaneous, and I'll be coming back to you soon for recommendations for steering committee members for each of these plans, and then, you know, one as well for the Comprehensive Plan, so we do want them integrated, working together, and understanding what's going on in each of the plans, so it's gonna be a great opportunity to engage the community, especially for the next four to six months. So, as I understand the process, so there's a steering committee, but there's also numerous opportunities for public hearings, public input? Oh, absolutely, yeah, there'll be public information meetings, and then public hearings, the steering committee will be, you know, members of the community that you know, that have expressed interest to you to be a part of one of these plans, or has an interest in particular, maybe in transportation or Parks and Recreation, and they will be part of the stakeholders that will come to the meetings, that the consultant will have, and the planning department's gonna be shepherding that, you know, just, there'll be tables with maps and getting people engaged, they'll be the principal group, but it will be open to anybody that would like to come, we just want to be sure that we can count on a certain core of people coming in, and again, that steering committee can be as large or small, you know, as you want it, and we might miss a name, or maybe someone comes to one of the information meetings and decides they'd like to join, and they can continue coming, so we do want to bring anybody that's interested into this process, and that's part of the RFQ that we're going to expect, you know, what is their experience and their relationship, and how do they engage the community, and what do they do in order to do that? And then what's the timeframe on completion of them? Well, the timeframe of completion would be, we'll launch it no later than September the 9th, they'll be given 30 days, so that takes us to October the 9th to qualify and review all the proposals, then we'll shortlist them for interviews, and then I'll come back and make my recommendation to you all as to which team should be selected for a contract, so that we can award a contract.
And then, once they're, once they're selected, how long will it take them to complete their project?
The Comprehensive Plan will probably be at least six months, the Transportation Plan could be done as quickly as 90 days, 120 days, Parks and Rec, I'm expecting 120 days at least, and depending, I'm confident we could do it in 120 days, and as a result, you know, there'll be weekly meetings, and one of the things we want to do is we want to have those meetings rotate throughout the whole city, so we can, you know, get people that would have an interest outside of the steering committee, that might be in a different part of town, and we'll bring the meeting to a venue near them, so we want to cover the city in this.
This is really exciting.
It is, because it is-
This is the next generation of city.
Well, it's your thumbprint on what your future city is, and the real question that will be asked of all the participants will be, what do you envision your community to look like at the end of the day, when it's completely built out, what will it be, what will Brookhaven look like, feel like, how will you recreate, how will you live, where will you work, and what opportunities will be there for pioneers, because the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan, we've got a call-out for all pioneers that would like to come, and it'd be an opportunity of redevelopment, so it is, it's your blank canvas that you get to paint, and I'm very excited for you.
All right, thank you, sanitation, RFQ update.
That is Mr. Gebbia.
Hey, you're all looking at me.
You gotta go up there.
Yeah. He's got a microphone.
Well, um-
Bonnie's too, if you need her, and Brad too.
I have some exciting news, we had an historic day yesterday at City Hall, we had an historic day yesterday, we invited in members of the residents, our residents, to assist us with a review of an RFP process, the premise was reviewing history with them of the events that brought us to where we are, basically being, we would never have begun looking at this unless we felt that we had to scrutinize an alternative to what at the time was a pending notification to accept either a higher price or a lower service level, that put us in the mode of looking what was in the best interest of the residents and issuing an RFP to do a comparative announce. That put us in the mode of looking what was in the best interest of the residents and issuing an RFP to do a comparative analysis. They then, DeKalb County then came back and withdrew their notice of a pending price change and/or level of service in a statement that said, at least for the balance of the year, but the wheels had already begun moving. And when the RFPs came back, we saw the financial impact that it could have on the city, which was very significant. So the challenge was, is this something we really do want to consider in light of the fact that DeKalb County sanitation is highly regarded? And that's just a given fact. We've had this conversation before. So rather than just move forward with this and have it be a decision made by a committee from the city, I thought it was very, very important that we bring in residents and we really get questions put forth to the vendors and have their concerns. So the objective was, as it was stated, and thank you all for the participants that you submitted. It worked out extremely well. That'll be listed on the Brookhaven City website soon with a picture that was taken of everybody and we'll give them due acknowledgement. The criteria was twofold. One, they have to come in with an open mind. We were almost there 100%. And the second was that the interview process was to find out, aside from the money aspect, which vendor would best exceed the level of what DeKalb County had. Okay? So we were not looking for me too. We were looking for something that's going to be above and beyond. So it was a really, it was about a four and a half hour day. They came in at 12:00. We did the first hour of a review so we could bring them up to speed with where we were as a city. Brad, Richard, and Bonnie did a phenomenal job having information prepared and it was all outlined. We did the overhead projection presentation so everybody could be on the same queue. And then we had one hour each with three different vendors and we had a lot of good questions. And when it was all over, did a quick recap of assessment. And the key question was, I put to them, okay, now that you've seen what you've seen, the bottom line question is, do we even want to move forward as a city and consider privatizing and moving away from DeKalb County? We had 100% of the people said yes. And I have to tell you, when they first came in, they were, there were a lot of skeptics in the group. So the impact, the result of all that was, you get the information out there and people can make their decision. And there's a lot of good information. So it's going to be an educational process. What happens at this point is that the committee still needs to make final evaluations of the bids and factor in now the input that we had from yesterday's session. So by the next council meeting on the 27th, we'll probably have a work session and present it to you all. And then you'll see where it is at that point. Any questions? Oh, no, it was brought to my attention very late last week from Bates and thank you for doing that. And I didn't know this, that Shambly has a refuge collection business of their own over there. So there will be a conversation with Shambly on this issue, just to make sure that we're covering all grounds. And I'll probably initiate that with Eric directly. And we'll have a report for you on the 27th too, how that turns out.
I would suggest you also bring in DeKalb County and let them...
Yeah, of course, no. There'll be a follow-up conversation with DeKalb County. Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have said that. It would be only prudent for us to have that at this point.
One of the concerns that I heard back from one of the representatives that I sent was that we hadn't really talked to the business community yet. Is that, is that part of our plan or how does that work?
No, I invited several businesses to come to this. Unfortunately, they have a business to run and they weren't there and I totally understood. How does that work? My understanding is that right now, DeKalb County mandates that they utilize DeKalb County. So they're excited if they don't. Brad, you're here. Where are you, Brad?
He's running.
Okay. So Brad, just remind me, and I meant to ask this yesterday and I didn't get the answer. Is it mandatory on commercial, on businesses, that they use the, if we choose to privatize, that they use them? Or do they still have the right to choose their own commercial sanitation?
It's my understanding that they would be required to use the vendor that we choose.
Okay. But I will say, from the information that we've gotten from each of the vendors, commercial is the same as residential. I mean, there's substantial savings with everything else that's factored in as far as recycling, franchise fee. If you're a business and you're looking to curtail costs, as long as the service is minimumly, and I hate to use this as the default line, minimumly equal to what DeKalb has, really going in the direction of exceeding, it's a win-win for a business.
All right. So your plan is to bring this back to us at a work session on the 27th?
Yes.
And sum up the presentations and...
Yes. We'll...
I must tell you, I'm still a little reluctant to go forward with this, partly because we have so much on our plate right now. You know, I've gotten plenty of emails from citizens saying that they are loyal to DeKalb County and DeKalb does a good job on this. And since rates didn't go up, they're kind of wondering why we're taking up this issue now. So I wouldn't mind backburnering it until, you know, after the end of the year.
Well, we can discuss it. Remember, it takes 180 days for this truck to turn around because that's how much notice we have to give to DeKalb. And they did say that they weren't raising their price until the end of the year. And some of the interesting facts that came out yesterday was they didn't raise... Is Richard here? No. No. Now I'm looking for... Oh, you were, Jeff, I think you were telling me. You might come up to the mic. Jeff Keller was at our meeting yesterday. Thank you, Jeff, for being there. You were a valuable aide.
I just happened to be down in DeKalb when the DeKalb Commission Finance Committee was discussing the mileage rate. And they all agreed not to raise the mileage rate. And the county CFO pointed out that if they don't raise the mileage rate, that they will significantly deplete their cash reserves and that the mileage rate increase next year will be even more substantial. And they also discussed other ways to bring in additional revenues. So the county is going to raise the mileage rate and fees next summer.
Did they specifically mention sanitation fees or were they just fees?
They weren't specific. So they didn't say this, my impression is because the referendums for the new cities will be held next June, maybe next May. And these increases will take place after those referendum votes, just for your information.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, what did you think about yesterday?
I'm one of the skeptics, you know, but the increases, I'm sorry, the decreases in the savings that can be provided is surprising. It did. And, you know, all three companies that proposed, you know, have done this for a long time. One of them in particular, or a couple in particular drove the routes. And I don't think they're blowing smoke on the savings that they can provide.
Stay there. There was an extra caveat. Rebecca, at all three of the companies said that they would reach out to the current DeKalb County employees, the sanitation drivers and helpers, and offer them opportunity to come work for them and maintain the same relationship with our city. I mean, that's, that's, that's something they all offered on their own without us asking. I thought that was pretty neat. And then secondarily, if they didn't fill it from there, they would seek local residents to become part of the team. So we would be enhancing employment opportunities in our city. So, I mean, there's a whole list of benefits.
Is that number I can apply?
Just do it right along.
Yeah, really. What I learned from yesterday, Jeff, and tell me if you agree with this, there were a number of skeptics in there from the get-go. But basically speaking, at the end, I think there was overall consensus that this is a move that would be beneficial to the city. My analogy is there were a lot of people who didn't want the city. And now that we have the city, I think a lot of those people are saying, hey, this is a good idea. It worked out well. It's a similar situation here. I think once you have the facts and they're communicated and you really understand what's going on, a lot of the reasons why people are not in favor of it is because they don't really understand it.
Well, and I admit, I don't know all the facts, so I'm anxious for our work session to... I'm wondering if the little old ladies on my block can handle a 95-pound garbage can out to the street. Are these men?
There are exceptions for that.
Yeah.
That if, there's a process each of the vendors had whereby, like my mom, she's, can barely walk now. And she had a letter from the doctor and she took it down to the post office so that they'll deliver the mail to her door now. Each of these service providers had a same, similar mechanism that they would come and pick up, pick up the trash at the back door.
It's called rear door.
Rear door service. And they said about anywhere from 3% to 5%. No, it wasn't that many.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
Well, all I'm saying is that I just haven't had a chance to really look at the details. Are these manned, unmanned? Are they, what is the exact cost savings? Is it worth it? You know, do they pick up everything? I'm anxious to see the facts. I just haven't seen them, that's all I'm saying.
And it's one of these things, you know, we discussed this. Based upon all the change that's going on, do you want to do it now or later? Also, you know, with the police being implemented, that's building trust in the community. So as we, and we're going to take on the parks, and as the community sees the improvements that you're providing, but do you want to do it all at once is the question.
Yeah, well, that's what we have to discuss exactly.
But tell me again, what's the 180-day, is it a six-month notice that we're required to give DeKalb? Is that the rule?
Six months notice on the routes because included in this program is a pilot program. And since the county has fixed routes, we would have to be able to identify one of their routes as the pilot program. And so the county is asking for a six-month notice in order to stop that route and that we would pick that up.
So during this six-month period of time, each of the vendors outlined what their transition plan would be and very, very, very thorough. I mean, it's, it's a plan. They each had plans that were very well laid out and the whole objective of it was to make the change over seamless. And they've done this before in other cities, so it's not like they're trying it out on us.
So you're talking about the pilot program not switching over completely?
Yeah. What I had always envisioned and the way we structured this was to take a minimum of what looks like it's going to be approximately 500 homes and run it for six months. Instead of exposing the entire city to this, let's prove that it can work. And if it doesn't, then we default back to DeKalb. If it does, then we go out and we say, hey, this is it.
If it doesn't work, Joe...
I know.
It's your tail.
Believe me, if anybody understands, you know, there's, there's very little political gain to be gotten out of what I'm doing here. I mean, you know, but I think it's the right thing to do.
I understand the reasons for it and I, and I agree with your reasons. Is if we can have substantial savings with the same level of customer service or better, why not investigate it?
Well, you know, there's another benefit and we talked about it, since we're having the conversation, I'll just reiterate it again. We should be able to increase our recycling rate substantially. I mean, we're in the single digits, the low teens right now. We're looking minimally to get up into the 40s and I think we can go higher than that. And that, that, you know, you can't put a price on that. But there is a price on that because there's a rebate that's given back to the communities that they can choose what they want to do with those funds and it could be a sizable chunk of change. In addition to that, each of the, each of the vendors has agreed to offer the city a franchise fee for the right to do exclusive sanitation service. And right now, that looks like it's going to be between $200,000 and $250,000 a year, which, if it follows through, as I'm recommending, that we put towards a key Brookhaven Beautiful Fund. We can do all kinds of things like that around the parks. We can build entry walls that announce people are coming into Brookhaven and do a nice stack of stone and have landscaping that goes with it.
And plant cherry trees.
Well, Rebecca, I yield, we will plant cherry trees in District 1.
But that's simply a rebate to the city of part of the fee that the citizens are paying, so...
It's built into the price. So when we talk about price savings, that can go as high as 40%.
You know, for instance, yeah, I mean, Peachtree Corners, I talked to them. I don't know if you saw, they recently had an announcement where they reduced their sanitation fees by 38%. Talking to one of the council members, the vast majority of that was simply reducing the franchise fee that Gwinnett County was charging. They didn't change their service, but they...
That's a big franchise fee.
Well, it was and Gwinnett County was making money off of it.
I can tell you right now, it's a 3% franchise fee.
So that, but again, that's being paid by the citizens, by the, excuse me, by the residents as part of their, as part of their fee.
Okay. The franchise fee is built into the price that we were quoted by the sanitation and it's still...
Less?
A 25% to 35% and 40% savings, depending on what program we go with.
I think, let me add something. Were the numbers that you presented, Joe, were they for just the pilot program?
No. Okay, well, that was interesting. We had, we had two parts on the bid on the RFP. The one was, what would be your yearly service for four pickups a week or three pickups a week? Because that's what we were continuing with at the time. And then what would be your price for a six-month pilot program? And the prices were identical. So they're coming, every company is coming into the same, we're going to give you at the pilot program level what you would be expecting to see at the city level. So it really is a true test.
Well, I just want to add one thing so the council can hear because I did not observe all four and a half hours of the presentation. I came in at the beginning, I saw a lot of skeptics in the room. And I came back after four and a half hours. They were pretty worn out, but I will say, there was a visible change in the people who'd heard the presentations, the citizen groups actually. Even though I would say the majority there were skeptics from the get-go, they were sold on this idea. So I think the facts are very important and help really identify the opportunity here.
I think we can end it by saying, we can put a lot of people's fears aside by saying that if this is approved and we move forward, if that's our decision as a council, it'll be a test program.
It's going to be in District 4?
And I'm volunteering District 4, yes. I will not put any of you under that kind of heat.
All right, thank you, Joe. We appreciate the work you're doing on this.
Thank you.
You know, I know you're getting a little ribbon for it, but you know, I understand your motivation.
I expected a ribbon, but for my own council.
I agree with your motivation, so it's something, the timeline is a little something different, but if it's something that we should do, we should do it. All right, last thing?
The last thing is discussion of golf cart ordinance.
We'll give it three minutes.
Okay. The city attorney has that information.
What I've done is I've passed out to you a proposed ordinance that we previously drafted for Dunwoody that they did not ever take up or pass. And then I passed out the state law to you, just to give you some examples of what you may or may not do is just as a start of a discussion item. And as Councilmember Madison requested some information on that and it was actually put together on this. What this obviously does is it tracks your ability, if you determine you want to, to let golf carts drive in the city. The state allows that now. There, it outlines some of the minimum mandatory things that you have to have on these carts if they're going to drive. Also, there is a stipulation, it's not shown within here though, that it talks about the speed limit on the streets that you could have them on. You can't have anything that's 45 miles an hour. You know, you don't, if it's a 35 mile an hour street and it's a 20 mile an hour golf cart, they'll take that, they'll take that one up but you're just not going to be able to run it on any of the other. The slow-moving vehicles don't get to go on the 45 or 55 mile an hour streets that you might have. That's just what we've given you as a point of reference for you to do that. If you desire to go forward with a motorized vehicle, we can put together an ordinance that tracks the state language and you can, you can have golf carts running up and down your streets.
Thank you.
Let me, let me add a point to this. The, the original purpose of this discussion was, I think, somewhat misconstrued by the press. And it is not specifically about golf carts, even though the golf cart ordinance is a part. The bigger discussion was about transportation alternatives for our community and how this slide that Daniel's pulled up, the role of transportation in promoting physical activity. We have a lot healthier citizens. You know, that talks about bicycle commuters. Public transportation users take 30% more steps per day, got to walk over to the MARTA. You know, golf carts could actually bridge the gap in our community where you have that short commute of maybe a mile. For example, post apartments getting over to Brookhaven MARTA. Other communities that actually utilize mass transit are MARTA, Brookhaven MARTA Station. So the conversation is... So the conversation is, I believe, an ongoing conversation that'll be a part of our transportation RFP. But one of the pieces that is a part of this transportation alternatives is a golf cart and our officers, and from a safety standpoint, we've got to have an ordinance that, you know, makes sure our citizenry, citizenry is safe. So just wanted to clarify that point, but I think that there are more and more golf carts I see out on the streets, and we need to clarify what the rules are for the citizens.
Agreed. I think it's appropriate, especially when you put it in the larger context of what we're trying to do.
Would you like to see a draft ordinance at your next...
I would kind of want to wait.
Or do you want to wait to the findings of the transportation?
As part of the transportation plan, we'll see what comes out of that, then, I don't, I mean, are you looking for an ordinance in the next month, or are you looking for it as part of the transportation plan?
Well, I mean, I simply think that it's, you know, I don't know that it's a timing issue, if, look, I do think that there needs to be some clarity for the golf carts that are on the streets already. That would be my only reason, and I think that it's important to move forward with an ordinance. But, you know, I certainly think it's good to table it for a little bit more discussion, because I don't even know what's in this ordinance until, you know, until I got it today. But all of these transportation, transportation alternatives, you know, satisfy, I think, a lot of the needs of the city, reducing traffic, being more environmental, and creating a better work, live, play community. So that's, that's the real intent.
Sure. We can keep discussing it in the next work session.
Yeah.
It's coming up in September, right, these, September, October?
Yes, September will be the launch for requesting the RFQs.
All right. Thank you, Bates. Any announcements? Executive session, I think we have, do we have executive?
Yes, we need an executive session.
All right. We're going to executive session, is there a motion?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss two, two litigation matters.
And one real estate matter.
And one real estate matter.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be an executive session, and then we'll come back out for the regular council meeting.